Good evening and welcome to the Board meeting, business meeting, and final budget hearing of May 7th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are reconvening after being in an executive session. And the first item on the agenda is BOSEs.
Good evening, everyone. So our first presentation this evening is going to be a word, a very special student of ours. So I would like to begin by welcoming up Ms. Lynn Allen, who's going to start us off. So welcome up.
How about now? Okay. I'll do this again. Good evening, everyone. What a joyous occasion it is for us at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs to be here with all of you. I have a few opening remarks that I'd like to share, and then we have many others to introduce, and finally, our special student of distinction. My name is Lynn Allen, Deputy Superintendent at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs. As one of our treasured 18th component school districts, it is always wonderful to return to Putnam Valley and have the opportunity to convey how much we appreciate your ongoing support and partnership in all things, but most importantly, the support of our amazing shared students. On behalf of Neil Boyle, our district superintendent, and our BOSEs board, one of our members is here tonight, Tina McKay, board trustee. I would like to sincerely thank the Putnam Valley Board of Education, Superintendent Luft, and the Putnam Valley Cabinet for providing us with time tonight to celebrate our outstanding student of distinction. At this time, it is my great pleasure to introduce Alenny Parisi, principal of our Pinesbridge program, who will do the honors of recognizing our very special student of distinction.
Thank you. Pinesbridge student Ijari Gill is a bright, hard-working young woman with an incredibly positive attitude. Ijari devotes herself to working hard at all of her school activities and has wonderful relationships with her classmates and the Pinesbridge staff. In addition to her strong work ethic and academic success, Ijari is also quite the photographer. She can often be seen in school taking pictures and capturing all the levels of excitement throughout the day. Ijari's teacher, Ms. Tahira Mushad, who's here with us today, said that it has been wonderful to watch Ijari grow. It is an honor being Ijari's teacher this year and watching her flourish in her education. This is just another milestone, and we know even greater achievements are ahead for her. For these reasons and many others, we have chosen Ijari to receive the Student of Distinction Award. Thank you. Congratulations, Ijari. So Ijari is here today with her mom, her dad, and her two sisters. And we are so happy to have the family with us. They are so supportive and have been an amazing support system for Ijari. And we have Ms. Jessica Phaitros, Ms. Tahira Mushad, classroom teachers, and our classroom aides, Ms. Nancy Byrne, Ms. Janita De La Cruz, and Miranda C. So thank you to the Pinesbridge staff for being here as well.
Can they all come up?
Yes. So we'd love to welcome everyone up. We have some things for Ijari.
Can anybody take their picture? Does anybody have a picture?
I don't have Janie.
She's not here. It's a long walk.
Was that you? There you go. Congratulations.
We also have a certificate for you, something you can hang on your wall. Certificate is awarded to Ijari Gill in recognition for your outstanding leadership skills, academic progress, and community spirit. Congratulations.
Take your badges.
I know it says that. I think we should reverse it. And no sense keeping candidates here.
I think they should stay for the budget hearing. No?
And I figured... I mean, whatever you think, Barbara. Whatever you think.
I just, somebody, I thought Janet said they put the candidates first. And I thought maybe mine...
That's what Jeremy said inside. The candidates go before the...
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you think we should do the candidates first before the final budget hearing? That's what Jeremy said.
Yeah.
So I'll move it. Okay. Thanks again. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. I love the socks. Socks like that when I was that age.
Oh, it's the final budget hearing?
Huh?
The budget hearings before the candidates.
No, I'm going to switch it. Okay. It's always nice to start with a student. We're going to change the agenda a little bit. We are going to do the, we have invited the candidates for the Board of Education to this meeting to introduce themselves to the public. We're going to do that first, and then we're going to do the final budget hearing. Just so that you know, the protocols for public participation at Board of Ed meetings are posted as you enter the cafeteria. Tonight, there'll be three opportunities to speak. One, after the final budget presentation, if you have budget comments or questions. There'll be another opportunity to speak to any of the agenda items prior to the board voting on those things. And then finally, there will be an opportunity to speak on any other matter after the board has concluded its discussions. Just so you know. So Mrs. Yedder, you want to...
Sure. So Barbara and I had an opportunity a few months ago to attend a Westchester Putnam meeting that they hold bimonthly. And one of the, we're talking about candidates and running and how to get their information out to the public. And one of the districts mentioned that they were able to, they invited the candidates to the board meeting to give a brief reason why they're running and introduce themselves. So we thought it'd be a great idea to introduce this to Putnam Valley. We're fortunate where we have two positions and four people running for those positions. And for all of us that have ran for these positions, we know how, what a challenge it is. And just be here and commit yourself to this. So we want to thank you for that opportunity, first of all, and invite you to give a brief introduction of yourself, why you're running. And there are, like you mentioned, four candidates. Zayn, I hope I didn't pronounce that wrong. Let me know if I did. Sasha, Barbara, and Miranda. And they're in alphabetical order. And I just want to note, Miranda is, had a commitment earlier, and so she, she's not here by the time it's, by it's her time. She'll be presenting later. So awareness of that. So first, we'll start with...
Zayd.
Zayd. I'm sorry, Zayd.
Welcome, Zayd. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. Can't lock the wheels on this. Hello to everybody. My name is Zaid Al Jamal, former student of Putnam Valley, born and raised my whole life. I'm just going to start off by saying the words my uncle told me when I was younger. He always said, "You have to give everything to the people who raised you." And when that time comes, you just, no matter what, you give it to them. So in the position that I'm in in life and where I'm at, I couldn't do it without the teachers, the families, the parents that all raised me in Putnam Valley. So that's why I decided to run and camp. Is there any way I could turn this mic up so I could step back?
You can, you take it off.
I can take it off?
You know, like Phil Donahue style.
All right, yeah. So let me get comfortable. Is this going to work? Yeah?
There is a time limit.
So I just, I want to give everything that I could back to this community, and I'll stop at nothing to make sure that happens. I'm looking into the camera because there's not a lot of people here. I want to make sure the streamers are watching. I don't know if I'm supposed to present a plan or anything. It's my first time doing this. I'm sure you guys have been keeping up with Putnam Valley Voice or seeing what they're saying about me. But just know, I might not know a school budget, but as a business owner and operator of two businesses, I sure do know how to balance the finances between that. So I know that's a big question when it comes up as a 22-year-old candidate, the finances and everything. But trust me, with the experience I have in that, I'm sure I could translate it to a school budget and make sure that everybody's satisfied. No matter how hard it is, I can't stress it enough, I will stop at nothing to make sure that Putnam Valley changes for the better. Academically, athletically, and just as a town and whole. You know, like I said, being here my whole life, I've seen, we've seen good, bad. And it's, it's time for positive change. It's time for a young-minded person who understands not just the students, but the teachers as well, and what the teachers go through and everything. And like I said, I'll stop at nothing to make sure that change happens. So is that...
That's good.
That's good?
Thank you, Zayd.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Zayd.
And Zayd, I just want to make sure I pronounce your name right. So Zayd.
Say that again.
I want to make sure I pronounce your name right.
Ready? Zayd...
Zayd.
Al Jamal.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we'll have Sasha.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexandra Hayes, but I go by Sasha. I'm really awkward about speaking in public, but I'll get better at it. So I'm going to read. I'm the mom to a wonderful fourth-grade boy. My family moved here in 2020, and I've been really happy in this town and within the district. We feel so welcome and are incredibly grateful for this village that we have found here. I'm also a full-time working mom. I'm an RN, previously an ICU trauma RN, now providing primary care to our homebound veterans, primarily in Orange County. I'm currently vice president of the PTA with plans to resign at the end of the year for my position to hopefully be more involved with the BOE. We are also a part of the scouting community, the 4-H community, and participate in various sports throughout the year. I hope to bring the perspective of the private sector to the board. It's public knowledge that the school board primarily consists of members from this community that have been involved in schools before, either as teachers or administrators. And as much as I love our teachers and administrators, I think it's so important to have a diverse school board to reflect the diverse needs and opinions of our taxpayers. I think it's wonderful that there are teachers and administrators that are familiar with how things work within our school districts as board members, but I also think that there's a need for a new face with new ideas. I want to be a voice of the people with no ties to the education system, the administration, or the teachers' union. There are so many things that I love about our schools and our school district, but I believe that there's always room for improvement. School is such an important place for our children. For many, it's their safe space. I am first and foremost focused on the schools being a safe, engaging, and supporting environment for all of our students. I want our children to succeed in the world and to make a difference. Some things that are important to me are maintaining small class sizes, ensuring that there's a diverse curriculum for our students, and teaching students how to learn and foster a love for learning. I strongly believe in the IB way of teaching that empowers children to take charge of their own learning and become independent and curious problem solvers. I believe that this way of learning helps students develop skills that will be useful to them as adults by creating lifelong learners with the ability to think critically. My hope is that students who want to pursue trades have just as many options as the children who want to pursue higher education. There are so many people and careers in this world, and it's important to support all of the students in our district. In a meeting I recently had with the Teachers' Federation, it became clear to me that there is a disconnect between the teachers, the administration, and the board. I realized that the teachers, who are the backbone of our education system, are not being heard, and they are not able to bring issues to the board without fear of backlash. It's my intention that if elected, I minimize this to connect. Much like nurses, the teachers are the closest to the issues and have the most knowledge about what the issues are and likely have perspective on what needs to be fixed and how. I also want to hear from parents about the issues that are facing the students. If we don't know about the issues, we aren't able to fix them and make them better. Since my son started school, I've been a class mom and an active participant in the PTA. Last year, I joined the PTA board as vice president. Within this role, I've worked with the board to create and maintain a budget. We evaluated what worked last year, and were able to cut activities and spending that were not worthwhile to reduce our budget for this year. I intend to bring that experience to the school board. Like everyone else in this town, I work hard for my money, and I like to see my money being spent efficiently and on necessary things. If elected, I plan to go through the budget with the BOE, line by line, to see what's necessary and how we can make changes to positively benefit taxpayers while not taking away from the children. As a nurse, I know how important it is to have evidence to make the best decisions. I will require the use of evidence and data to evaluate the budget. When it comes time to vote, I hope that voters understand that I am first and foremost for the children. Any choices that I want to make for the school are intended to make it a better, safer, more inclusive, and kinder place for students. I want the school district to create lifelong learners who will grow up and make a difference in the world. I want students, parents, and teachers to be able to discuss issues and want the board to address these issues for the betterment of the students. When you got to vote, know that if you vote for me, you're going to vote for a loving parent who wants the best for the, for his, for her child and his classmates.
Thank you.
And next, we'll have Mrs. Parman, Barbara Parman.
I can't remember now why we decided to do this. Why did we decide to do this? Anyway, I'm running to be re-elected to serve the students, staff, parents, and community of Putnam Valley. Since 1987, when my son started kindergarten, I've been involved with the Putnam Valley schools. I was a PTA volunteer, especially with the book fair and with parents as reading partners. I was a PTA officer, including president of the PTA. I served as a building steering rep. And then I decided to get more involved, and I ran for the board. So I was a board trustee. I left the board to teach because I, I'd worked to make Putnam Valley a really wonderful district, and I wanted to teach in that district. So I left the board and luckily got a job in Putnam Valley. I taught for 15 years. Zayd was one of my students. And I'm back. Then when I retired, I went, I decided to go back to the board. This, during this iteration of the board, I realized that I needed connections to other board members besides ours. So I joined Westchester Putnam School Boards Association and the Lower Hudson Council of School Officials. And I've worked on advocacy for educational issues. I'm going to continue to be transparent in my work for students, to build budgets that focus on academic excellence, physical and artistic opportunities, but that is affordable to our taxpayers. Our motto is not "Child First and Foremost", building a foundation to the past. It is to the future. I want to embrace new ideas, new information, new learning, not just for the sake of change, but to truly prepare students for the future that they will be living in and helping to develop. Thank you.
And I did see Miranda come in, so Miranda, please. Thank you.
Sorry I was late.
What was the final score?
I don't want to talk about it.
Okay, sorry.
A couple of points, you know. The girls' softball team had their strike, strikeout cancer night. And that's very personal to all of us. So anyway, my name is Miranda Zaki. I've gotten very used to this thing up here. I have a ninth grader and a first grader in our district. I decided to run now for the second time for our Board of Education trustee position because after three years of observation here, sitting in the seat, I've experienced a lot as a parent in our district. We need a voice to represent not only our teachers, our students, the parents, but our entire community as a whole, including but not limited to our senior citizens. They're a big part of our community. And, you know, without them, none of us would be here, honestly. So we need to fill some gaps, communication. We also need a voice to represent, you know, the students as a whole. I am very involved in the children in our community, as you know. I love them all. I am very active with my own children and other people's children. And they do talk to me a lot. And I talk to them. I try and help them with everything I can. And we need to build a lot of things. Trust, trust with the parents, trust with the community as a whole, trust with our seniors that we're doing the right thing. I've spoken for many years up here, multiple times, so everybody pretty much knows where I stands if you watch your Board of Ed meetings. Hopefully, you do. Please don't forget to vote May 21st at, all day long. I think it starts at 6 o'clock, right? And it's over at 9 o'clock, the elementary school doors. It takes less than two minutes. We do not have a good voter turnout for our school budgets in the past and school voting. So please vote May 21st, two minutes of your time. Okay, guys, thank you. Nice seeing you all again.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, we all know how hard it is to put yourselves out there, so thank you for committing to this. Thank you.
Okay. Now our final budget hearing. How many times have you done this, Dr. Luft? Jill?
Four. We're not doing the presentation again.
One more time.
All right. So good evening, everyone. I'll start, and then I know that Jill's going to jump in. As always, the district has developed a budget based upon the feedback we received and what is obviously centered in the best interests of our students. We think we're bringing forward a very financially sustainable budget, one that continues to support our academic programs, continues to support our staffing. In fact, we've added staff members in some area. I got in council at the middle school to help with student mental health issues. An elementary school teacher to lower class sizes. So we're doing our best to meet with those, to meet the priorities that are set forth by the board in our community in a way that still recognizes the impact on the taxpayers. Our budget comes in, as it does every year, below the tax levy cap. If you remove the capital improvements and the money we budget for transportation, it represents about a 1% increase from last year's budget, which is, I think, really impressive considering what the inflationary numbers are out in the, in the real world. So that's sort of my quick spiel. We heard from the board, the four candidates that are running for the two open board seats. And there are two propositions on the ballot that I know that Jill's going to speak a little bit about. My fear is there's big numbers attached to them. I don't want people to be scared by the numbers. The numbers represent maximum amounts. Really, what the district is asking for is permission, permission to set up a capital reserve fund, which ultimately saves taxpayers money in the long run when those funds are used, as opposed to borrowing money, and to earmark money for transportation vehicles to replace vehicles. The nice part about this is we have a 12-year lifecycle to pay those vehicles off, as opposed to paying them off for over five years. As everyone's aware, we have a hybrid system. We expect to appoint a new transportation provider during this meeting, but we still have our own fleet, and we provide some of our own service. And it's important that we continue to have vehicles to provide that service to our students. So that's it in a quick nutshell. And I'll turn it over to Jill for some more specifics. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. So just to, to review the school budget propositions. As Dr. Luft mentioned, there's our budget. So there's four different items to be on the ballots. And one, the main one, obviously, the budget itself. This year, we're looking at a budget of $60.5 million. That is an increase of 4.15%. Of course, our tax levy cap is increasing, but at 2.56. So only part of, you know, of the budget is increasing through the tax levy. Proposition to establish a second capital reserve, I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And the proposition to allow the financing for the district buses and to elect two board trustees. So those are the things that everyone's coming to the polls for on May 21st, again, at the elementary school between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And now I'll talk to you a little bit about the capital reserve proposition. It seems to be getting a bit of press. So I think it's important that we go over it and make sure that everyone understands the realities of it and the importance of it. It's a very important proposition to establish a capital reserve, in my, in my opinion, and I think the opinion of the board. This type of proposition was first approved in 2015, and taxpayers soon came to find out that the benefit of that capital reserve could be realized at a future date and would save taxpayers money. The district was able to reserve money prior to the 2018 capital project. And because the money was set aside, it reduced the cost of the interest payments by thousands of dollars. And it will do the same in the future. Without one, we, we face higher interest rates. We face the unknown. We face costs for escalating infrastructure and capital improvements that we don't know, you know, what it's going to cost and what those interest payments will be. This makes that more predictable when we're able to reduce the amount of debt that we have to finance. That being said, as a taxpayer, I would, I'm not a taxpayer here, but as a taxpayer in any community, I would want to make sure that saving strategies are occurring with every budget annually. And I think this is one way to ensure that it's being put in a place that can only be used for that purpose. A capital reserve is something that has to be voted on to be used and can only be voted on to establish. So it puts it in a very secure place where it just can't be accessed every year to utilize towards another budget or to be utilized towards something that you don't know what it's going to be used for. When budgeting, we consider fiscal responsibility and stability, not only in the present, but we're thoughtful to establish a plan for the future. It is important to have vision. Our district is in very good financial health. It does not come just from me, but our auditors and New York State auditors. We have a high rating of fiscal strength, and we want to keep it that way. A budget is always planned with contingency funds in order to mitigate risk for the entire community. Because I know that that was another, another topic or another part of what I've been hearing is that we have contingency funds built into a budget. Of course, we do. For example, construction projects have a contingency, right? Every construction project builds in a 5% to 10% contingency. Our budget carries a very conservative contingency, nowhere near that, probably 1% to 1.5% annually. The money from the budget that remains unspent cannot go back to reduce the ensuing year's budget. It must be either spent before the end of the year or go into a reserve account when the fiscal year ends. So if there are remaining monies at the end of the year, there isn't, that money cannot go to next year's budget to reduce a tax, a tax levy. The tax cap starts with the prior year's tax levy, so that isn't up... The tax cap starts with the prior year's tax levy, so that isn't, that is impossible. So there is no mechanism for unspent money to reduce the next year's budget. Keep in mind, contingency funds are not built into the budget for purpose, for the purposes of putting them into a capital reserve. It is, it's definitely an option and ultimately a board decision when there are remaining funds at the end of a fiscal cycle. Contingency can cover such things as the following: employees on, for instance, an employee, employees on sick leave, they are entitled to sick pay, they get paid their sick pay, and we have to hire a replacement. There has to be a contingency in the budget for those types of things. We can have more than one employee in that situation in any given year. We have unexpected students entering the district during a school year who may also have special needs, may or may not. There could be emergency repairs, or any combination of these that warrant the use of contingency funds in a budget. So I just want to stress the idea behind having a capital reserve and what the importance of it is, and why there are contingency funds within a budget. I've seen a lot of press on that this week, and I think that I want to make sure that people understand the reason behind wanting to establish this.
Jill, can you also mention the fact that the state of New York requires us to renew this capital fund every certain amount of years? This is not our choice.
Right, so we established one in 2015. It's going to expire in 2025, which is coming up this year. We have to establish a new one every 10 years. It's just the law. The money that was in the original capital reserve in 2015, well, wasn't in there in 2015, it grew over a period of time. There's about $3.7 million in that reserve right now, which will help to reduce tremendously the cost of our next capital project by literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. That money, like I said, is not budgeted for. Dr. Luft mentioned, we're allowed to, we're allowed to continue to put money into that reserve until it reaches, they're giving us a ceiling of $10 million. It would be nearly impossible to do that over 10 years. Like I said, we have 3.7 in there right now, which is not nearly that amount. We've only used $610,000 of that towards a capital project that we did in 2018, and since then, it's grown some. So that will only help us and help taxpayers in the future, for future budgets. Things are getting harder and harder. We're having to use, you know, reserve funds to balance the budget from year to year. So, again, it can't be used unless it's used through voter approval, and I think that's very important for people to note. So once it goes in there, it can't come out unless there's a voter approval to use it.
And if that capital fund is not there, we would have to borrow, in the case of a capital project, for instance, the turf is, got to be replaced. It's over 10 years old, it's ripping up, it's dangerous. So that would be onerous to the public if we went out and got a loan to do that, because interest rates now are very high. This capital fund would assist us, it's like a savings bank. We could take that money and use it and not really raise taxes at all.
We don't have to finance it, you know, but we, and we also know what the life of that field is, so we know that over 10 years period of time, that that's the usual life of a turf field, that we're gonna have to come up with that money to replace it. A roof, many things that we know what the lifespan is, those are things we need to plan for. If you don't plan for them, you end up having to reduce a budget and cut positions and cut all kinds of things to be able to afford them. So a capital reserve is definitely, you know, it's a buffer against any kind of economic downturn. It can help taxpayers by reducing interest payments, as we mentioned, and it also keeps the value of your home stable, and it keeps the community in good fiscal health. So, you know, those are, that's a very important part of this year's budget, and I think it was important to reiterate all of that information. Again, all the information on the budget can be found on our website, pvcsd.org, and any, anybody who has, you know, questions, that doesn't understand what's in that budget line by line, wants to review that with me, wants to review it with Dr. Luft, we're there every day, ask questions, get the right answers. Don't, don't go to social media and look for those answers, I don't think that's the right place to go.
So, quickly talking about, I know voter turnout came up. We certainly hope that our voter turnout continues to improve. I've been sharing these statistics both during our public presentations, our budget workshops, as well as any other opportunities. I had the opportunity to address some of our senior citizens before the school play the other day, and I started off with a huge thank you, and my thank you was really geared on the fact that individuals age 55 and older represent over 50% of all votes cast on our school budget. So the fact that we continue to pass school budgets tells us that many of those individuals aged 55 and older are in fact supporting, voting yes on our budget. So we owe them a great deal of gratitude for coming out. Many of them may not, no longer have children or grandchildren in our schools, but they recognize the impact that high-quality schools has on their community, has on their home values, and they continually come out and support us. So I was greatly appreciative to those individuals. That being said, I would love for there to be more voter turnout in other demographic age groups. Only 25% of our parents vote, so 75% of our parents do not cast a ballot, and it only represents about 30% of all ballots cast. So 70% of individuals who show up the day of the vote have no children in the schools. And that's obviously of concern. Those who have the greatest amount to lose are the parents who have students in our schools today, and I think that's an important piece. I think the reason for individuals not coming out varies, but I think there's a great deal of complacency. You live in a great community, you have great schools, the budget passes every year, somebody else will cast that vote, somebody else will take care of that for you, there's nothing to worry about. The state sets the cap, as long as you don't go over the cap, there's very little to worry about. But the reality is, there's a lot to worry about in Putnam Valley. Last year's budget passed 54% to 46%. That's really close. Some of our neighboring districts, although far larger, have fewer votes cast, which is scary, but their budgets pass 80% to 20%. So while we want to continue to get voter turnout, it's important that that sense of complacency doesn't set in, right? 54, 46 is pretty close when our neighboring districts are 80, 20, with fewer votes. So it's just important information, I hope anyone watching, anyone here, to take advantage of the opportunity, come out and vote. Polls are open as long as they possibly can be. Absentee ballots are widely available for anyone who wants them, and have your voice be heard, because a 4% margin that has so much at stake for our students and our community is too close for me. And I really hope more voters come out and let their voices be heard. May 21st, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Thank you.
The worth of the community, and you can talk to any real estate agent in the area, the worth of the community is based upon its school and its public agencies and services that the community provides, your library, your parks, but most, especially your schools. And if the school is a prideful and a very successful entity for our kids in the educational arena, then your community will reflect that in the prices of the homes, the cost of homes, and the quality of life. So please keep that in mind when you go to vote, May 21st.
Can you also speak about absentee ballots, please?
Do you want to talk about absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots and early mail ballots are very much available. There's an application that has to be filled out. It's available online, you can print it off the website. They can call me, and I'll mail them one, they can come into the office and fill it out. Once the application is filled out, if the voter is standing in front of me, they can immediately get the ballot, vote, and it gets placed in a secure box and not opened until the day of the vote. All absentee and early mail ballots have to be received by 5:00 PM on May 21st in order to count for the election. Thank you.
Okay. Does the public, do we have any comments from the public, questions, budget, questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you, both Dr. Luft and Jill and your team. One of the things that Putnam Valley should feel confident in is the people who have been working on this budget have the best interests of Putnam Valley at heart. They listen to all sides, they listen to teachers, they listen to administrators, they listen to CSEA, they listen to other staff. They plan, not reactionary, but with thoughtful planning, looking ahead five years and even farther another five years. So they care about what happens to the taxes and to the people in this district, and I think you can feel confident that they've done a really good job, and I appreciate, Jill, all that you've done and your team.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the support of the board each and every year.
Okay, I will now open it up for comments on any of the agenda items.
You asked, but I wasn't sure.
State your name, please.
Jeannie Denike, and thank you. Barbara, you had asked if anybody had anything about the budget, but I want to make sure everyone knows that the PTA is graciously hosting a Meet the Candidates forum. They've selected a day, Wednesday, May 15th. It will be here in the, oh, it's gonna be at the elementary school. Thank you. Hmm, okay.
In the auditorium, I would, okay.
7:00 on the 15th.
Is it gonna be recorded?
Well, now that I know it's at the elementary school, that presents another set of challenges. I thought it was gonna be here, so stay tuned.
The PTA will reconsider.
Okay.
And, what time again, Jeannie?
7:00 on the 15th.
7:00.
Right now, it's scheduled at the elementary school, but this location may be better so that we can record it for the community at large.
You'll let us know.
We'll, we'll over, we'll over-communicate that, once that gets secured. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Stephen Smith. Sorry, I've been in there for a while.
Wait, could you come to the mic, could you come to the mic so you can get it recorded?
All the viewers at home, they need to hear the voice in the mic.
Somebody put this in very assertively.
There you go.
So, good evening. I haven't been to a meeting for a couple of years, I've been working out of state. I'm Dr. Stephen Smith, I'm a resident here of Putnam Valley for the last 12 years. I'm also retired, so I'm a retiree. My wife is here, Serena, and I wanted to bring this up at this point after the budget discussion, to put out to the viewers and everybody here who's looking at the potential to vote, how important this is. I understand from following statistics that the enrollment at Putnam Valley is dropping every year, going forward for the next 10 years. And so as we look at our budget and we look at the constraints of the state regarding budgets, we don't have to spend up to the cap. We can seriously look at reducing our budget, and I'm asking you this as a retiree. As a homeowner here in Putnam Valley, now like I said, I've been here the last 12 years, I pay $24,000 a year in taxes. Putnam County is not the majority of that number, Putnam Valley School District is, okay? And as a retiree, it's very meaningful to me that we look at the facts. So I just want to state a set of statistics for potential voters to look at as they think about this budget. I'm gonna do a comparison here of the Bronxville School District and the Putnam Valley School District. The reason I picked this comparison, this is from Pat, who is also very supportive in discussing the school budget for Putnam Valley, is they represent equal numbers of students in the district. Bronxville has 1,584 students, Putnam Valley has 1,586 students. The Bronxville, oh, one more statement, I think this is really important, the financial basis, if you compare the Bronx to Putnam Valley, the financial basis of the Bronx is 16th in the state. The financial basis, this is the economy of the employers, that we are the employers, we are the tax base, we are paying this budget. The tax base in Putnam Valley is 171st in the state. So we're 155% lower than Bronx, but yet for some reason, we're spending $6 million a year more than the Bronx. So let's consider, we don't have to spend up to the limit of the state budget, we can actually turn around and say, how can we reduce and keep our quality of education at the standard it is, but look at starting to cut back on expenditures where they're not necessary? Because, again, I'm bringing up, their budget for the beginning year next year that they're voting on is $6 million lower than ours. So think about this, our tax base is nowhere near the Bronx's tax base, so why are we expected to pay so much more for our school system than they are? So thank you. So please, everyone, go out and vote on the 21st, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just looked up real quick, Bronxville, their per pupil expenditure is slightly higher than ours, so while their overall budget may be less, they spend more per child than Putnam Valley does. I would think, and obviously I don't have the only information in front of me, but I've been to Bronxville several times, Bronxville has a huge tax base in terms of commercial properties. There's a whole downtown area in Bronxville, there's a ton of restaurants and shops and municipal buildings, and so all of that, those monies come into the school district as tax revenue, something that Putnam Valley is obviously significantly deficient in, in terms of commercial property. The other thing that stands out here is the economically disadvantaged percentage is 4% for Bronxville. It's a really affluent district. Their combined wealth ratio is 3.86, it's almost four times the wealth of Putnam Valley. So there's certainly, while the enrollment is very close to each other, there's certainly a lot of discrepancies between what Bronxville brings in in terms of other revenues and what Putnam Valley is able to do.
And a really good point, I think that's great you brought those up. I've looked at and looked at methods that we can bring into the state budget, tax revenue, because all of us shop in Maupac, and I think it's really reasonable since we have such a small business district and we expend our local dollars so heavily in the Maupac district that we look at ways of getting some of those funds as a tax base back to our school system. So that's a whole nother, and I think it's a valid thing to bring up.
It's a very valid point, right? There's a lot of concerns about how the state.
Yeah, I don't expect us to create, but at the same point, since we don't have that business base, I think it's realistic to look at what kind of a school budget can we afford. Like I said, I don't really want to move out of Putnam Valley, I love my home, but it's really hard to make that decision, especially as a retiree, that I'm paying $26,000 a year in taxes. The majority, $14,000 of it, is for a school district I have no children in. I had one for the last eight years, and he's graduated two years ago. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you very much for tonight, thank you.
So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve items 2 through 12 as appears within the consent agenda, consent agenda section of this meeting.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino is going to sum.
We have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. O. Mrs. Bellino is going to explain what the items are.
There's 12 items on tonight's consent agenda, excuse me, 11 items. We're approving minutes for the last two board meetings, we're approving CSE/CPSE placements, we're approving an amended 2324 substitute listing, we're approving agreements with eight different organizations, the first one, Putnam County, providing special education-related services to students, INF Associates for a bus electrification impact study, an agreement with Town of Putnam Valley for rental of the school buses for this summer camp, two health and welfare contracts, one with Tarrytown and one with Lakeland, Southern Westchester's, Southern Westchester BOSI's IPA contract, a contract with Maris College for student teachers and student interns at Putnam Valley, a contract with CBIZ Valuation Group, and we're entering into a team merger agreement with Lakeland for girls' and boys' varsity swimming. Girls' and boys' varsity ice hockey will be a combination of Lakeland, Hen-Hud, Haldane, and Lakeland, and will also include a boys' modified ice hockey team as well. We're also including approval of a coach, a volunteer coach, we're approving discarding of one item from the high school, a piano that is of no use or any value to the district. We're pointing the workers and the chairpeople for the May 21st. We're appointing the workers and the chairpeople for the May 21st, 2024 budget. We need to decide who that is. Someone who can open and close the budget, and it cannot be Ms. Palmerly.
I could close it. Sam, can you open it?
I could open it, no problem.
Perfect. Co-chairs will be Jeanette Yetter and Sam Oliverio, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sam's the early bird on the night owl, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolutions, pass. Report. Students?
They've been very busy.
It's nice to see all three of you here.
I know. When's the last time we were all here?
Over two months.
So we have a varsity awards ceremony and Hall of Fame induction, June 10th at 5:30 PM. This is the second year that we've had this, so that's June 10th, I'm guessing, here at the high school. Tomorrow is School Nurse Day, so we wanted to say thank you to our Putnam Valley School District nurses, Kathy Hill, Frank Murphy, Nurse Jackie LeClay, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, Jess Wymore. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all you do for all of us every day. May 29th is the Science Research Symposium, and all of our science research students are hard at work. The juniors recently went to a college fair at Boces where they met with representatives from a variety of colleges, so they're preparing for their busy senior year of colleges. Mrs. Cassone took 38 students to attend the Putnam County Youth Forum, so that gives students the opportunity for hands-on informative workshops on issues such as health lifestyles and eating disorders, internet safety and technology, law and order in the community, teen addictions, and more. I believe this was last week, I don't really remember, or two weeks ago. The Tarrytown Schools sent a team of administrators to visit Studio 116, which is our film studio here at the high school. They were interested in our successful film and media program here, and they wanted to replicate that at their school. They're very impressed with the work being created by the students and our incredible studio, and they want to come back again and bring their superintendent. And I just wanted to shout out all of our amazing film students and film program, and Mr. Mahoney and Mrs. Shutz, that we did so cool that we inspired them to bring that to their students, which is really cool. This Thursday, actually, we have our second annual celebration of film, Thursday, May 9th. Join us in the pack at 6:00 PM to watch and honor our video production and IB film students' hard work. So it's kind of like a premiere of the IB Year Two, their collaborative films, and the work of IB Year One students, and then the media and production TV, TV production class also. So we have like the Ninth Show, our YouTube channel, so it's just like a collection of all of our cool film work. So that's this Thursday, May 9th, at 6:00 in the pack. We have IB and AP tests have started, which is so fun. Their student government has created a spirit week for the week of May 20th for the high school. We have senior prom coming up Thursday, June 6th. High School Corinth concert, May 22nd at 7:00 PM. And then we have the band concert, June 5th at 7:00 PM. And, oh, senior versus junior powder puff game is June 15th. We brought that back this year. And then Happy National Teacher Appreciation Week, so that's this week, so...
Thank you. You left out something really important.
Oh, is it Rent?
Yes, it is. So it was amazing. Both of you did, the whole cast and crew did an amazing job.
For sure.
Should be congratulated.
Yes.
Toot your own horn a little bit.
There was also the Honor Society recently, that all three of you were there, so congratulations.
You've all got it in your super...
I have multiple. I appreciate you leaving some stuff for me. Normally, there's nothing left.
Before you start, how is it going for you guys to replace, to pick your replacements for next year? We had set that as a goal at the beginning of the year?
Nothing.
Sorry.
Yeah, we've been talking so much about it, every single day. Every single day, we allot an hour of time and we meet with candidates to discuss the future, of course.
Arm twisting, Charles.
I'll speak to the class of 2025 for you, and I'll get you some names, okay? I know nothing about that.
It'd be great if they could be here at our first meeting of the year, and you guys were a little delayed.
And we missed you those first...
We miss it. We need the student input, you know? We really like that.
You mentioned when we started that you wanted, you said to me about meetings over the summer that you would be interested in them being there? So when would they start, like?
It's all on the computer, so if they decide they want to register, we would just register them and they could take them whenever they got to them.
Yep, August, July, and August is a couple of meetings.
Oh, yay. I was going to give Charles that picture.
Well, that was a surprise.
One picture.
I'll come back to it.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Well, anyway, if you could think about it and find a way to talk to them or speak to Mr. Mello or whatever.
Yeah, of course.
We'd love to have them, you know...
As soon as possible.
Yeah, before the end of the year.
Three?
Three is, I think, worked out really well, so if one or two of you were in other things, it was always one of you here, so that worked out. Gives you comfort, too.
Yeah.
You're not alone. Okay, Dr. Luft, now your turn.
My turn? So before I begin, I want to start with a picture that I came across recently, and everyone will remember when Charlie so affectionately referred to me as a senior citizen, so I thought I would share.
I thought it was something else.
Before I say all these nice things about him, I wanted to share this cute little kid in fourth grade, receiving an award.
I still have that.
You still have the awards hanging?
That is so cool. I'm the one in the middle.
Yeah.
On top.
Thank you. I thought it was cute.
Where did you get that? How do you have... I don't even have that. I don't think my daughter...
We can get you a copy of it.
I have one for you. I have one for you.
Ms. Palmerly had it on her fridge for the last 15 years.
I don't know how to feel about this.
I'm the one who used to present the Jacob Greenfield Award, because Jacob was a daycare client of mine, and, you know, I watched him grow up, so I always liked to give the award to the student in his name. I didn't have Charles in fourth grade, so I didn't know him as a student, but everything that they told me about him when he was selected for that honor was, you know, how incredibly versatile he was in learning, how he, you know, had so many different interests, he was, you know, always willing to share, so a lot of positive comments, so, anyway. I honestly don't remember that day, so if you don't remember it either, that's okay, but it was nice that Mrs. Denike had that picture saved on her 2016 computer, right? 2016?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how to weave it into the graduation ceremony.
Maybe we don't do that. Maybe we don't.
Stream it at the prom.
I'm going to start streaming her pictures of Reese from the third and fourth grade play.
Play.
It makes you feel better. They've also found pictures of little Jeremy Luft when I was a student here, back in the day when I had hair, so there's...
Really? I thought you were, I thought you already...
I wasn't born this way. I had hair just like yours, Charlie.
We'll find pictures of you two, Kira. Don't think you got out of it. We can find pictures of you two. Anyway, all right.
All right, sorry. We got sidetracked.
Back to the report.
All right, back to the report. So during the week of April 20th, Putnam Valley had over 70 students from grades three to 12 participating in the 2024 Spring NISWA Solo and Ensemble Festival, so the number alone is pretty impressive. The number of students that won, took the risk to put themselves out there and participate, and the number that were accepted and actually followed through with it is very impressive. So these students and their teachers have worked very hard over the past few months to prepare a performance that was assessed by adjudicators using a statewide rubric. So we're very proud of these students, their teachers, for all of the hard work, so congratulations to all of you. The elementary school had their recorder concert on April 18th. You guys remember that? You still got your recorder? Dark green, no? I did get to attend the performance of Rent, which took place on the weekend of April 26th. I was told that the Saturday night performance was the one to be at, so I changed my plans to be at Saturday night. I did not regret it. I do want to recognize, two of our student representatives were stars of the show, so Charlie and Reese. Neither of you have mastered the skill of not dancing and singing on furniture, but we'll work on that. Reese belted an entire song while standing on a table, which was slightly dangerous, but very impressive. No, huge congratulations to everyone. It was a really impressive show. It was, obviously stayed to the very end. Reese kept threatening me, like I was going to leave, but it was really impressive. It's amazing to see how talented our students are. Some of these students, not necessarily the two that are with us this evening, are so quiet in school, and then all of a sudden, you put them up on stage, and in that environment, it's like a different personality comes out. So, again, congratulations to all, really impressive performance, and obviously to all of those that make it all possible. I was told to go get water at intermission, so I ended up, I worked too, so that's it. So our National Honor Society, their induction ceremony on May 1st, over 60 students were inducted. That's a really impressive number. My favorite part is when the seniors share what colleges they're going to and what careers they're pursuing, while I wish more picked education. I'm always impressed by the caliber of the schools our students are getting into and the type of professions that they're exploring. So congratulations to everyone, including these three. The board will be asked to approve a new transportation contract this evening. Just for sort of public disclosure, there's been some questions about this. While the district had an existing contract with their current provider, that provider decided to leave that contract, to no longer continue to provide service, and to essentially force the district out to bid. The district, following state protocols, went out to bid, and another vendor, a new vendor, was deemed to be the best vendor and offered the lowest cost to the district. So that will be our new vendor, following the board's approval this evening, moving forward. So this was not something the district initiated. This is something that was initiated by the contractor, and it's something where the district is beholden to very strict requirements in terms of how we award these bids, and the determination was made that our current contractor was not the most cost-effective alternative option going forward. So that will be coming up later in this meeting, but I do want to provide a little background. We were happy to stay with our current contractor for the remainder of our contract, had they decided to honor those terms. Putnam Northern Westchester held a legislative event at PNW Boces, so I was able to attend that. There was actually a ton of state assembly people and senators, and even some of our national representation was present. We talked about some of the most pressing issues facing public schools in our region and brainstormed sort of solutions to those. We spoke a lot about voter information Tuesday, May 21st, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Putnam Valley Elementary School. Absentee or early mail-in ballots are available, and this is a very busy week, as we had mentioned. Teacher Appreciation Week, nurse, school nurse recognition or nurse recognition week, the celebration of film coming up, Science Research Symposium, Teacher Appreciation Week, and just a quick public reminder, we changed the calendar last budget, well, that's board meeting, not budget meeting, that's board meeting, which was a budget meeting. June 25th and 26th is now a half-day for the elementary school, and June 26th is a half-day for students at the middle school. Both of those are for students. Any questions? All right, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to new business. The first item on the agenda, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Sierra Espinarra as a long-term substitute teacher at the elementary school effective May 13th, 2024, through June 26, 2024, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the rate of $160 per day. Ms. Espinarra holds childhood education 1 through 6 and early childhood B through 2. Initial certification.
Second. Questions or comments?
I do just want to recognize, Sierra has accepted this multitude of long-term substitutions for us. She's there more than some of our regular teachers, but she's continually willing to come back and to take these short-term. She always does an excellent job, and I just want to recognize her for her continued support of Putnam Valley and our students.
She was one of mine, too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Alana Hammel to a probationary appointment of school monitor effective May 8th of 2024, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, May 7th of 2025, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
I'm sorry, that's me. Resolved on the recommendation, number six got me thrown here. Resolved the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Matthew Dingler to a probationary appointment of cleaner effective May 8th, 2024, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, May 7th, 2025, at the operations department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? I have to, anytime I see an appointment of a cleaner, I have to comment on how beautifully our cleaning staff keeps our buildings. I mean, it is just, I mean...
Very true.
Really. Beautifully done, always. They're friendly, they're helpful, they're, but they do a beautiful job, and I can't thank them enough for that, so. I'm glad we've got another one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of special education teacher Christina Bizarro from the district effective August 31st, 2024, as per Document 175/24.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved to approve the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association 2024-2025 nominating committee slate of officers, directors, members of the Board of Directors, and the 2024-2025 proposed budget, and authorize the Board of Education president to sign the WPSBA Annual Meeting Ballot as per Document 174 over 24. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? The, I know you got this in the mail, the slate of, the new slate of officers. We will not, I don't think any of us is going to attend, because the Board of Directors meeting, the meeting is going to be the same night as the IB banquet, and we're going to, we want to be here with you guys, so West Putts is going to have to just go without us, so we'll send our vote in, but not go in person. Another year, I'd like to go, Natalie and I went one year. It's really nice. I try to support them, but I pick you guys over them, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Whereas the Board of Education, in accordance with Section 31014 of the Education Law and Section 156.12 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education, issued a request for a proposal for furnishing student transportation services for the Putnam Valley Central School District for various transportation routes, home-to-school and field and athletic trips, which proposals were opened publicly on April 12, 2024, and whereas a committee was established to review and analyze the proposals to ensure compliance with the RFP. All proposals determined to be in compliance with the RFP were evaluated in accordance with the point system set forth in the RFP, and Royal Coach Lines LLC received the highest number of points. And whereas the district and Royal Coach Lines LLC agreed to amend and clarify certain provisions in the RFP, has set forth Amendment Number One, presented to the board at this meeting. And Amendment Number One, together with the RFP, will serve as a basis for the contract for... And Amendment Number One, together with the RFP, will serve as a basis for the contract with the Royal Coach Lines LLC. Therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education award the contract for home-to-school transportation and field and athletic trips transportation to Royal Coach Lines LLC for a term of five years, beginning with the 2024-2025 school year and through the 2028-2029 school year, subject, however, to the approval of the 2024-2025 budget by the district voters at the annual meeting on May 21st, 2024. And be it further resolved that in the event that the district voters do not approve the 2024-2025 budget, the board awards the home-to-school and field and athletic trips transportation contracts to Royal Coach Lines LLC for a one-year term for the 2024-2025 school year, subject to renewal for additional year or years in accordance with the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute Amendment Number One to the RFP, as well as the contracts with Royal Coach Lines LLC for home-to-school and field and athletic trips transportation upon submission by Royal Coach Lines LLC of the required insurance certificates and security for the performance of said contracts and the amount of the individual contract prices and in the form specified in the request for proposals.
Second.
Questions?
Excellent, excellent job.
Questions or comments?
That's why Crystal's my hair.
You counted it out, no.
Yeah.
Questions or comments?
No.
All, so the passing of the budget also would affect this.
Transportation.
Transportation. And, and transportation consistency, you know?
Right, so what it, what it means is that the, if the budget passes, um, they would be, uh, it's, it's announced in the budget document that it would be a five-year contract being approved. If for some reason the budget were to fail, they would be entitled to a one-year contract and then um subject to approval year after year until the five years were over, yep.
And summer is the kind of turnover time, like they would come here and plan the routes and do all that kind of work?
Yeah, they'll be working with our transportation department. Um, we have uh software that determines the routing, and then um the bus company will work with our, with our staff and transportation to determine those, you know, which routes would be. Right now, you know, things are staying, the routing is, is staying the same. There's no intention to change anything. Um, you know, of course, it changes depending on the students that are, you know, uh, need the transportation, but pretty much status quo um to what's going on right now, just a different bus company.
So the, the bus company that's coming in is, uh, actually Steve this evening is here from Royal Coach. And it's, it's a well-known company in our region. We've actually had very long and detailed conversations with some of our neighboring school districts that have used them or is currently, or that are currently utilizing them. And they've received very positive praise from other school districts in our region. Uh, they really impressed us throughout the RFP process. I think uh one of the things that parents are gonna love most is the technology that's included on their buses. Uh, they have a bus patrol program, so essentially parents can see the bus in real time on GPS, be alerted as the bus nears their, nears their stop. Um, and that's something that's included in the price, that's still lower than the price from our current uh contractor. So they're very excited to come in and get started. Obviously, everybody hopes that they are able to retain as many of our current bus drivers as possible. And our bus drivers know our routes, they know our streets, they know our parents, they know our kids. So that's certainly something that uh we are hopeful that they're able to retain many of those drivers, especially those that live in our community. And um we hope for a very smooth transition. So the, while the contract effective date will be July 1st, I know that they have lots of events planned to get ready for that uh transition uh on that day, so.
Great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any topic. Okay, upcoming meetings?
So, like, so our next meeting is, I have to look. So our next meeting is scheduled for May 23rd. And the following meeting after that is June 6th. Uh, at one of the June meetings, either June 6th or June 20th, there'll be an update from the Facilities Planning Committee. So that's something uh that is in the works, but we wanted to wait until after the budget season had passed. Uh, but there'll be sort of a presentation that overviews the process, uh, the stakeholder involvement, and ultimately what uh is sort of on that priority list in terms of receiving the budget, the board's approval, and, and looking to move forward with that. So that's all to come uh in June.
Well, we also have a presentation from the Bosse's individuals about their programs.
At the next meeting.
The next, the next meeting. They're scheduled for May 23rd, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, board member comments?
Uh, I've, I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
Number one, I, I want to thank all the teachers, because today is Teacher Appreciation Day, for all that they do for our kids. That they're outstanding, and uh our district would not be the, the noted district it is without them and, and their continued uh work within the classroom. But I also want to talk about tomorrow, which is School Nurse Recognition Day. We have four individuals, Kathy Hill, Jacqueline Leclerc, Jessica Wymore, and Francis Murphy, who have just done an outstanding job in providing care, kindness, and concern for our kids. And they go out of their way every single day to make sure our kids are physically and mentally on, on the money and in focus. We really can't thank them enough. They are an integral part of our educational system. And that, that recognition definitely uh is deserved, so I, I just want to, want to thank them all. And then finally, at the Honor Society, which I, I think Ms. Penta does a great job with that, by the way. She really organizes that very well. I love the senior presentations at the end. I'm a little disappointed, though, that only eight of the seniors have opted to go to a SUNY school. It's the greatest bargain available today for, for college. Uh, we have four university centers, Buffalo, Stony Brook, Vinghamton, and Albany. We have great colleges, we have great community colleges. And the price cannot be matched anywhere else in these United States. A great college, education at a great price. So I, I, I hope word gets out to the parents that the SUNY schools are a great option for our kids. Also, I, only two of our graduating seniors within the Honor Society have opted to go into education, and that concerns me. At the next meeting, I, I'd like to discuss what perhaps this board can do to try to make the teaching profession much more attractive. We received a letter from uh the President of the Union, Ryan Odell, a few months ago, and I keep thinking about that. I'm not gonna do it tonight, but on the 23rd, I'd, I'd like to discuss that in open forum and see how we can support some of the ideas that President Odell put forward in his letter. We're not attracting people to teaching as we once did. There are so few individuals who look at the profession now and say, whoa. Look at, look at the retirement system and everything else. But again, that's for a later date. So uh, those are my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Teaching's hard. I'm not a teacher, and I know teacher, teaching's hard, so I hear you. Um, and again, I want to express the same thing, that um thank you to our teachers and our staff during this week, so.
Um, I will say I took the, the law, the, the NISBA law course, the five hours. I'm always amazed at how much the law changes from year to year. And, and to keep up with what's latest in the law, um, educa, just education law. This is not like the law, this is just dealing with education law. So if you didn't get a chance to take it and, and another one comes up in the summer, um, it might be a really good thing to do, because they, they, they did, they covered AI, they covered free speech, they covered student safety, a wide variety of topics, and current topics, so it was really good. Anyway, it was good.
Yeah, we, we were sent a summary of um
Yeah.
of those discussions, which I thought was very interesting.
Yeah. It was like a hundred and some pages of laws. It's like, oh my God. Anyway, okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Wow, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, and thank you again.
Remember to vote for 21st.